It's nine o'clock. What are your thoughts? Should we wait another moment?
Let's wait, yeah, another thirty.
Here, Bob, do you mind if we wait a moment?
No.
I live south of town. It's real tough to get places on time right now. They've got the highway like alternating and then Pearson's closed. Well, Pearson's clean boy, not Pearson, sorry, Sanson Trail.
Thanks.
Thanks for that update.
There just may be like a hundred people.
Last night we had some problems down at Horseshoe Bend and our White Pearson attorney from that firm was unable to make it. Was talking to us in a dark park of Horseshoe Bend, which is pretty entertaining to do that. So, yeah. And thanks for that update.
It is moving, though. It's just.
Help yourself to coffee and treats, everybody, if you want anything.
So, it's these coffee makers, strong.
I don't know who made it today. We just recently switched to save some money and it's kind of a mixed bag because now we have to measure it ourselves instead of opening up the bag and dumping. So, some people are high octane and some people are mellow and you'd never know what you're gonna get.
Oh, yeah.
It's fun. It's an adventure.
High octane is one.
You just wanna stay away from coffee at three o'clock in the afternoon because I could end really badly. Okay. Here we go.
Here, Bob. What's not on your outline is possibility of introductions at the beginning. If you wanna ask everyone to introduce themselves, that could be helpful.
Sure.
Yeah, especially since we have a combination of people on TV, as they call it, and there's maybe Sheila could help me with some of that if you have board members on TV.
Yeah. It just works. What's happening here? Yeah, hit the right button.
You thought it.
I did.
I think you have critical mass.
Yeah.
You have critical mass. I think you can go ahead and get served.
Okay. I'll call the meeting to order. And Rich, would you do roll call of council members, please?
Absolutely. Council member. Sarah Thompson, Mayor Giles.
Here.
Council member Nelson.
Council member Nelson, we're doing roll call.
I'm here, for Nielsen.
I'm here.
Council member Macheszek.
Here.
Council member Thoreau.
Here.
Thank you, council. Thanks, everyone, for attending in person. So, yeah, let me, let me give some opening remarks and I'd like to make sure that we know who's on TV, as I call it, on Teams. And I would like to make sure everyone gets introduced around the table today. So, this is, this idea that's coming to fruition today of working with Chamber very closely and collaborating on some of the challenges that we have in our city. Being a resort town is really, really neat and it's quite an honor. We really enjoy working with all of our citizens, our visitors, et cetera, our businesses. But there's some challenging things and the council is really interested in trying to collaborate with Chamber and other groups to make this go even better in the future. So, we really appreciate you carving out time being here with us today. And I noticed on our agenda bill, one of the goals was to decide if we could pursue development of a joint destination management plan. And I'm absolutely sure council's interested in that. So, this is a really good step forward today's meeting. Thanks a lot. So, Sheila, would you introduce your members that are here in the room and then those that are on screen?
Yes. Thanks for having us. So, Sheila Francis, Executive Director of the Chamber. We have Skylar with Tamara Akersort, board member, April Whitney, our PR Awesomeness and Marketing Committee member. And online, we have Mackenzie Kramer. She is our contract marketer and all things McCall. She knows everything. So, wish she could be here, but sick kiddos. And I believe Graham from Tamara Akersort is also online and got a couple messages of trying to be there, but they couldn't make it. So, they're all excited. I know Sam really wanted to be here, but she's on the grandy finishing that little raft trip. So, yeah, that's who we've got here.
And Judy, are you here representing the public? Are you here as a member of the public?
Yeah, I'm here because we're, we have this topic on doing democracy on the 30th of September.
Thank you.
Summer McCray. Sustainable is the topic.
Fantastic. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for those introductions and again, welcome, everyone. So, first up, Sheila, you are gonna share some of the Chamber goals and some key facts about the organization. And I'll let you start out and then after that, we're going to move into our guest speaker and just gonna ask Erin if you would introduce our guest speaker at that time.
Actually, that would be Delta.
Excuse me.
I see two, mayor.
Okay.
Thank you for having this joint work session with us. I don't know how to do this. All right. So, just as a quick introduction, it's kind of our longer, you know, who we are. So, we're committed to maintaining a desirable quality of life, featuring year-round recreational opportunities as well as a thriving economic climate. The McCall Area Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau collaborates with local businesses, citizen groups, city governments, and several outlined communities to see that growth is directed positively and beneficially. Chamber's collective voice of local businesses promoting and protecting their interests and community as a whole. We're a little bit unique in that we are a combination of a Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. It's becoming more with smaller towns as we looked across the state, but it's not ubiquitous. So, many people have their Chamber of Commerce and they have their Visitors Bureau and they're totally separate. So, we kind of are interesting that we do both. And coming across a little paperwork, as I was, I think in the 90s, I believe, we adopted this joint model for grant funding, actually, to be able to properly market a little bit better and take advantage of some of those state-funded opportunities. So, our current mission statement, obviously short, you know, support and promote businesses for a sustainable, healthy, and engaged community for years to come. Stuff on. Okay. Just wanna make sure. But for our strategic vision, the board went through in March, April?
April.
April. I was in and out on that month. So, we really decided to focus on the support and promote local businesses for about the next year-ish. That doesn't mean we're going to neglect the marketing aspect. It just means that's not our primary focus right now. So, we're doing really great with the Visit McCall stuff. Need to amplify our Chamber services a little bit more. So, that is what I have been charged with. Done like six months on the job. Just a little bit about our membership stats. We pulled this from the city website, City Clerk. Six hundred and eighty-six licensed businesses and 395 vacation rental licenses, which was a lot. Kind of base this on just the city or the regular business licenses. So, with that, there's 355 current members. And of those, 227 have McCall mailing addresses. I wish I could have had a little more to dive into the numbers and figure out of those that are in the impact area or the general vicinity versus city-city. But we have some other things to work on. So, I didn't have my lovely coordinators looking at every single address with that. So, yeah, and 52% of the business members are here in McCall. So.
We'd probably pull those stats for you with our GIS.
Brilliant.
Yeah, like.
It's like we're just sitting there looking at addresses.
Just thinking like, yeah, so good GIS exercise.
Yay. Things I don't know. Okay. So, eventually we went through our visioning retreat and kind of lesser known for our business support and, you know, do we market tourism too much? So, with the business support, you know, visitmccall.org is our primary source of information. And a lot of it has to do with the grant funding. The grant funding for the website, which is, you know, if anyone's done a website lately, I believe you all did, it's not an inexpensive endeavor. So, to be able to do a great website, it really does need to be tourism-focused. We are able to add the Chamber initiatives, but it does need to be primarily focused towards visit. And what we're working on right now to kind of rebalance our ship right now is to retool that. So, the Chamber and Business Services are a lot more accessible and obvious because they're kind of at the footer right now. I don't love how that is because it's even, you know, I'm on that website daily and I still have a hard time with it. So, we are working on retooling that and updating a lot of the content that's specific to Chamber Services. Again, a lot of this comes back to grant funding because that is our primary source of being able to do a lot of things. And there's very specific requirements for how that works. Doesn't mean we can't kind of bend it a little bit here and there to help our community as a whole versus just marketing for tourism. But that's just kind of what we're at. And we're also overhauling our membership committee right now. They kind of were a stagnant committee of, they were a committee, community committee. So, I'm actually charging them with things to do and what we're working on. So, we're refocusing that in their objectives. And as for marketing tourism, you know, quote-unquote, "too much", it's challenged because a lot of our businesses and a lot of our members rely on tourism. So, it's an interesting little mix there. But we are working on refining that messaging to be more sustainable and work on responsible visitation. So, I'm very excited when Delta and I worked on this.
We have.
Yeah.
More sales 2020.
Yes, actually.
I just found this.
I'm glad you're here.
And we're not starting. We, we actually created a new program in the state because we said, we don't just wanna tell people to come here in 2020 and 21. We said, we need to teach them about responsible recreation and make that our messaging. And because McCall Chamber took the lead in that, they opened that up for the entire rest of the state to use the grant money the same way.
And the state actually borrowed from us and launched their Travel with Care. And that was directly inspired by the McCall Chamber initiatives, which is very cool.
So, I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure more refined. Yeah. Yes. We continue. We think it's great and very important, but.
Yes. And like you said, it is that balancing act of, you know, not all businesses rely on tourism. There are some arguments to be made about some trickle-down. Is that right or is that wrong? I don't know. But that's where we're at. So, with our strategic plan, kind of mentioned, you know, seek a better balance between what is the Chamber and what is the Visitors Bureau. We've been killing it on the visit side. So, we're trying, I'm part of what I, my background is business development. So, trying to work on that Chamber Services and really support our local businesses. Kind of already went through a lot of this. This is a little bit redundant, but more content focused on business support. And I think that's a great opportunity for us to work more with the city, the City Clerk's office and other departments. And just to make that a little easier and better because, you know, some people come to you, some people come to us. Why not work together and collaborate with other entities for new opportunities? So, we haven't really been a lot of data-focused. It's just kind of been, let's operate and make things happen. So, I'm really working on kind of tracking some of these so we can actually get some data to back up what we're doing and see what the changes result in. So, 62% of her income, like I said, is from grants and 91% of that is from the ITC grant. So, like I said, we've gotta be very careful with that, but it is a way that we're able to kind of start and leverage that. So, in the local economy, now we wouldn't be able to have the LLT tax if we didn't derive a significant portion of our economic activity, thank you, from tourism. So, that's kind of interesting. So, why do we continue to market? Important theme here is familiarity does not equate to action. Plenty of people know about McCall, but are they actually gonna come here? So, we're working on the advertising to shape when they visit, what they're spending their money on, and who they're coming with. So, without that, you know, if Bend continues to market, if Whitefish, Montana continues to market, Park City, you name it, any other small mountain town with some recreation, we risk losing a lot of some of that market share if we just stopped advertising overnight. Would it be, you know, detrimental? I don't know, but it's something I don't think many of our businesses would want to risk. And with that, with potential economic turmoil, people are looking at their dollars, you know, outdoor recreation is not necessarily inexpensive. Skiing, not cheap. So, if they are gonna spend their dollars, we wanna make sure that there's, we'd like them to spend their dollars here versus elsewhere. And with that, we can also control the narrative of guiding visitors, when the best times to visit, you know, the right way to visit with the McCall promise. Because, you know, if we only marketed come in July, come in July, which we don't market at all, I think we'd be in a little bit of trouble if we're being honest. So, we have a significant, significant for fall and winter recreation when there's more availability of services. So, we don't stress our community. And again, familiarity doesn't equate to action. So, the competition never stops, as we've said. And with the stability for local businesses, you know, using July as example, if everyone derived all of their economic benefit in July, that's a little chaotic for the rest of the year and you're not necessarily able to keep your employees year-round or, you know, offer some of the potential benefits. So, with advertising, we're able to provide a little bit more stability and people are able to keep their businesses operating in a similar manner and keep staff hired. So, we're making tourism work for us instead of just overwhelming businesses. I had a too-long didn't read. Keep advertising because we want to control the message and sustain our economy and shape how tourism impacts our community. It's just not about bringing people here all the time. It's about bringing the right people at the right times. So, that is where we're at and I'm very excited. I feel like this worked out very well with the, with Delta's, the present presentation today. So, in conclusion, we've got a lot of opportunities to better serve the business community and grow the Chamber of Commerce. And communication and collaboration is critical and always look forward to these joint work sessions. Delta and I get coffee once a month to chat about things, which is great. And continue to refine our tourism marketing to better serve the community as a whole and take care of our community and environment. So, that's what I've got.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
You back up one slide. So, first of all, that was a great introduction. Even though you talk really fast.
I know. You told me to slow down.
I keep up with you. Thanks to Starbucks this morning. So, what is GL, semicolon, DR?
Too long, didn't read. It's like an internet thing of like, you know, you post this and you're like, all right, here's the actual conclusion.
You say that, didn't you?
I did, yes.
That's what our council would prefer at all meetings.
Yes.
That was a really good.
I'd love to see that.
A good introduction. And Michelle, thanks for sharing about some of our abilities to help you. Anytime you have data needs like that, the city, I think, is really good at that. Please reach out to Michelle and others. All right, you're Delta. I did remember that after you mentioned it, that you sit in Chamber meetings, at least with Sheila, once a month. I think that's so important to have, have good communication like that.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yeah.
On the slide in particular, and I was on a couple of other slides. And it's been something that I've noticed for a while, bringing the right people. And it's really, for me, that's really, it doesn't sit well.
I can speak on that because I've been on the committee that's been working on that. When we talk about bringing the right people, we talk about highly targeted digital advertising. And we're not talking necessarily about economic groups. We have a regional area where we think is appealing for a drive market. And what we're trying to do is match individuals' interest with what McCall offers. I had a friend of mine go, you know what McCall really needs? That would be great, really just fill out McCall. They need like a kids', like play park, basically carnival. And I was like, no one in McCall wants that. That's not what McCall is. Like, you may see that as a person, go to Silverwood, go to these places that offer that. What we're promoting, not just through the messaging, but through who we target and analyze and go after, are people who like what we already have, people who are interested in outdoor activities, people who maybe like sampling different kinds of brews. We are well-represented in that area. So, that's what we talk about when we're trying to get the right kind of people, is the people who won't come here and go, oh, crap, there's nothing, oh, my gosh, there's nothing to do. They say, they say what appeals to them is a hike to Boulder Lake and, and the other activities, mountain biking, and things that we have plenty of to share versus people who want to come and, you know, be very apprised. I mean, ski tents, right? We are not a party ski tent. This is, I've been doing this for 20 years. We don't try to act like we are because we're a family place. We advertise Little Ski Hill more than we advertise our bars. So, that's sort of the nuances and the big picture stuff about attracting the right visitors is meaning people who like what we already have.
And I, I get your sentiment on that. That's why sometimes I put "right" because I didn't know another way to put it, I guess you say. And it's not, it's not meant to be exclusionary. It's more so the highly, highly targeted, that's the most. That doesn't mean that no one else is gonna see it or be, or take advantage of it.
So, rather than the right people is the right activity.
Yes.
Let, let's show you the right activity, the right, what you want, but.
And digital advertising allows us to interest pick.
But saying the right people, like this has been going on for a while. Like with the Fourth of July thing, my annual protest vote against banning alcohol. And the right people, that's the message, the, the right people message is exclusion, by nature exclusionary. So, that, like, for me, that's, that, that just hurts me every time I read and hear it. It's really frustrating because I think the right people are the young kids that come here to party and have fun. I think the right people are the families that come here to enjoy whatever we have. Like, everyone is the right person.
Yeah, unless you're looking for a casino or a theme park.
It's.
We're not gonna market.
It's not the right, it's not the right activity.
Yeah.
You know?
Yes.
Like, those people also might, the casino person who loves going to Las Vegas might also love coming all and sitting at the beach or going in the mountains. So, like.
I think we'll see that many communities struggle with the same aspects and conversations. And, and that's why I'd love, if you don't mind, mayor, to move and listen to, hear from Kristin Dahl for a moment. And then we can come back to these conversations, which is our goal for the last half of our meeting today is to have these, these types of conversations. So, I don't mean to cut you.
No, that's totally, I just wanted to put it out there.
Thank you for that. So, with your permission, there, may I introduce Kristin to join us?
Yes. And thank you, Delta. Appreciate us moving along. I think it's helpful to our guest speaker, though, to hear some of the concerns. And this is something pretty passionate that council cares about what Colby was talking about. So, thanks for listening. All right. If you could introduce Kristin and her company and look forward to her remarks.
Thank you, mayor, council. And I do wanna recognize the Chamber of Commerce and thank them for helping to support bringing Kristin to the, the table and for the presentation, their cost-sharing for her presentation today. So, thanks to the Chamber for that partnership. Kristin, I had the pleasure of hearing Kristin speak at the Mountain Town Planners Conference last year. And it really resonated because, as she'll describe, many communities are struggling with some of the same things that we are around tourism, tourism being key to our economy and yet also putting pressure on our infrastructure, on our way of life, on those places that we love most. And so, Kristin is with an organization called Cross Current Collective. She's the founder and CEO. And that organization is based out of Hood River, Oregon. But she's done a lot of work with mountain towns and other places, both in the Pacific Northwest and outside of that. So, Kristin, thank you for joining us today. And I'll turn it over to you. And please let me know if there's anything I can do to support you.
Okay, thanks. Well, I just will first start off. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just to say hello and thank you for having me. It's great to be here. I love 8:00 AM presentations. It's 8:00 AM over here, 8:25. Okay, no, it's really, it's great. It gets the juices flowing. I'm gonna go ahead and start the slideshow. So, I'm a very visual learner and also I'm not an expert with teams. So, let me just navigate this window over here and do this and then share. Okay. Let me know if you can see that. You got it. Okay. Fan, fantastic. Okay. So, anyhow, thanks for having me. And yep, it was great to meet Delta last year in Bend at the Mountain Town and Resort Planners Conference. It's a conference I've been going to since I started my company and just find it's incredible to be amidst, amongst all of the different towns and hearing their issues and so many that really it's difficult to separate out really tourism from, you know, the rest of the community. They're just really one and the same in some of these places. So, anyway, thanks for inviting me. I'll share what I can and also try to stick within the timeframe that Delta shared. And, but I'm also available to answer questions or support any other dialogue after for a little bit. So, my background, just so you kind of know where I'm coming from, I'm actually from Southeast Alaska. So, I grew up in a tourism-based economy in Juneau, which is a cruise ship-based economy, but also, you know, outdoor recreation and all the things. And I really started my career in this space as a guide. So, I worked as a glacier guide for quite a few years up on one of the ice fields. Near Juneau, if you've ever been there. And then after college, I started whitewater guiding. And it was really through this passion of, of sharing other places with other people and really kind of circulating amongst different tourism economies as I would move from guiding from one place to another where I really became passionate about this, this, I would say, everything around balance. How do we balance, you know, our community livability with visitation? It's so powerful to travel. It's so powerful to be a traveler. But how do you really create community systems that can, can, can harness it without, you know, damaging what's there? And so, this a little bit about my background. I was hired on with Travel Oregon and helped create their Destination Development Department over about 13 years. And then just really decided I love Oregon. So, here are some Oregon examples in my presentation. But I was really ready to kind of expand my realm to really encompass more of the West. So, I've been working with Cross Current through Cross Current, I guess, for the last five years. And I wanted to mention a couple of things about the company. This is our team. So, it's just me here today, but we have a really core group of awesome women predominantly. But we also work with a large network of expertise really around the globe. And we support communities by sort of plug-and-playing this expertise. You can learn more about it on our website. The name Cross Current comes from my background of guiding. And the reason I wanted to mention it is that, you know, in a community, it's really easy to kind of get pushed around by the forces, you know, by the water flowing. And it's really up to us to create those systems and those venues for communities to engage and to discuss and to really create that momentum. And if you're a river runner, which it sounds like some of you are, thinking about sort of how do you point positive across this moving current? So, you're not just pushed into those obstacles. So, you can really move around obstacles effectively and, and in concert with one another. So, I'm really passionate about the concept. I'm also passionate about rivers and I love, love Idaho rivers. So, how do you know when your destination strategy is needed? So, these are just a few kind of signs and symptoms that we hear in communities in the West or see, I guess, witness. Regular letters to the editor complaining about tourism. And this can come in, obviously, many different forms. Service businesses are often shut down for many weeks out of the year. Um, service businesses are often shut down for many weeks out of the year. Um, in some communities, sometimes it's just days of the week, but they're not really necessarily able to operate, you know, uh year round. And you'll hear residents say things like, this place just doesn't feel like it used to. And, you know, lots of subtext to that. The trailhead is always so crowded. I don't even go there anymore, right? Or the lake, it's so crowded. I don't go there. You know, I hear this all the time where I live. I don't even go on the weekends anymore. I don't go in the summer anymore. So locals are feeling a little bit pushed out. Um, there's so many Airbnb, Airbnbs popping up in my neighborhood. And, you know, all the complaints that can potentially go along with that as well. And then this one, you know, kind of spans the high, high use destinations to low use, but everyone just goes to the, you know, X, fill in the blank. But they don't go anywhere else. Um, some communities are so small, they say they only stop at the gas station. But in other places, you have some kind of iconic thing that everyone's drawn to and they're going there and they're hitting that really hard and causing a lot of degradation, but they're really not aware of all the other things to do. So these are some of the um, you know, just kind of more clear symptoms that we see in uh communities in the West. So a little bit of background here. Um, and uh so if I sound uh professor-y, it's just because I love to share this content. Um, I also teach a bit for the George Washington University. And so some of these slides are from a course we do in sustainable destination management, but um, really if you, and I'll make this very quick, so don't worry, I won't, I won't go on long. But if you kind of look back over the course of time, um, this is a chart that shows the increase in uh travel. Um, this is really international tourism or tourist arrivals as they call them over time. And so you can really see the increase in travel and tourism and it's sort of at an increment or exponential rate um since really the nineteen fifty's. And it's not been even around the globe, but um it's definitely been a huge increase uh with the growth of um leisure time and the growth of expendable uh um uh income. All right. Um, so in the early two thousands, a term sort of started coming to the forefront for those of us working in this space, which is overtourism. Uh, and there was even a book written at that time. And really this global rising awareness that there's certain places around the world that are experiencing just this overwhelming uh visitation at times without any ability to kind of um uh control the conversation or sort of handle that visitation. And then we had um twenty twenty uh COVID hit. And uh what happened was overnight uh visitation really came to a screeching halt. And this is a chart from the UN uh World Tourism Organization. And you can kind of see the drop in both um uh receipts and international arrivals. You know, both down around seventy, sixty to seventy percent across the globe. So it was really just this phenomenon that no one had really experienced um since the growth of travel. And um what that did was really shut down these places that were experiencing this high volume of visitation. To the point where uh we were having these conversations about what should tourism look like in my community? Right? And in some places it was longer than others. Um, and what we found in the West was that um this moment where the communities got quiet for a minute only lasted a, a very short period of time, because what we found was that those communities that are high in outdoor recreation amenities really provided this space for people to play during the pandemic. So we had these shorter bumps. And this is um looking specifically at your southwestern region in Idaho, you can see the dip in twenty twenty um that came back. And in fact, since I do do this presentation all over the West, I would say this is the most shallow dip I see, I've seen in a long time. Um, most communities were hit really hard. You guys um seem to really um depend on visiting friends and family and relatives coming from across the West. And so your dip was really pretty smaller in the pandemic. Um, so that's, that's kind of interesting. But where we're at right now is that globally, travel and tourism really came back to pre-pandemic levels in twenty twenty-four. And that really equates to, you know, this one point four billion international tourist arrivals globally last year. It contributed to ten percent of global GDP and um one in twelve jobs around the world. So one thing is certain. Um, you know, tourism economy is diffuse, but it employs a lot of people in all kinds of different jobs. Um, so we've seen just this rapid rebound and the good news is, you know, the economic receipts and the, the employment levels were back up to the fourth largest global employer as an industry now. And sorry, last slide on the global stuff, but Americas are just, just barely floating below um pre-pandemic levels. But what this ended up looking like in our Western communities, here's Bend. Um, just a funny photo, but um, you know, our places were um packed again, right? So it went from, oh my gosh, how do we shape tourism? What should this look like? How do we plan for when tourists come back? To all of a sudden overnight, we just kind of um, you know, had these, these issues crop right back up some, in some places, you know, worse than, than before. Um, and so I, I actually didn't include these slides, but there's been a global conversation and a global analysis of um destination management and marketing organizations across the world. And the conversation has really shifted um from how do we, you heard this with the McCall Chamber presentation too. But how do we shift from simply marketing our destinations um to a more sophisticated marketing, as McCall Chamber pointed out? But also how do we shift the conversation and really start to align um what's going on in our communities? And, and the needs of our local residents and the issues that are happening in our communities. So one of the big trends has been um uh resident sentiment surveys. This is from one we did with Big Sky in twenty twenty-three. Where really, you know, taking the time to listen to locals, both local residents, excuse me, and stakeholders in your tourism economy. But to really find out not just about their complaints, but about what could they, what do they need to see different in their community? Um, if you're going to continue on with your um, you know, robust tourism economy. This is aside from a resident sentiment survey out of Bend where, you know, perceptions were mostly negative across kind of all of the different impact areas except for um the economic impact, which was viewed as favorable. So you know, there's really just this transformational pressure in tourism. It's at an all time high. Um, people love to travel. We have leisure time. We have, we have money. Um, I just checked the resident or, excuse me, American sentiment survey just before jumping on this meeting. And it's still, American sentiment to travel is still just as high as ever. Nothing has really changed, even in the last many months. Um, so there's really just this moment in time um for us to shape our communities. Um, you know, and be proactive about our approaches. So how do we move forward? So um I'm going to share a little bit about sort of destination strategies and um sort of some of the key components to them um and what we see as effective components for these things. So the first one, and I'm sorry for this terrible photo. I need to, I need to put in some of my own travel photos, but this is um and this is the Amalfi Coast. And I don't know if anyone in the room, I can only see four of you, but um but if anyone's been to this part of the world, but does anyone even know the name of a community in Italy that's on the Amalfi Coast? Yeah. And I don't know if anyone's been there. Maybe this is a bad example, but the idea of a destination mindset. So most um, I, I would say ninety-nine percent of visitors don't care if they're going to a city jurisdiction, a county jurisdiction. Um, you know, our forest service unit versus a BLM unit versus a national park unit. They really don't care. They just want to get to the experience and to the amenity and um enjoy the place without thinking a lot about the boundaries. And so the more we can start to shift our mindset to be thinking as a destination uh and rather than a jurisdiction, um the better off we're going to be in these type of conversations. Um, the other thing is around uh developing leadership and considering your destination audiences. So uh for, I would say, the large uh majority of the last many decades, the destination marketing organization conversation has really just focused on visitors. You know, who's our visitor? Who's our target market? Who are we bringing? And um as we start to shift from a marketing to more of a management conversation, we really need to start to think about those stakeholders within our community, within the tourism ecosystem. And I'll explain what I mean by that here in the next slide. And then how do we cultivate the leadership to really start to coordinate um across these different interests? Because it shouldn't be all on the shoulders of a destination organization. Um, and the tourism uh ecosystem. And this, it really is kind of all the different agencies and organizations and uh private sector businesses that contribute to the visitor experience. So this is going to look different depending on your community composition. Um, but every single one of these, you know, uh entities listed on the screen really plays some key role in the visitor experience. So it's oftentimes what I find is a community um kind of deep into their thinking around tourism planning, they may not be thinking about coordinating with the adjacent uh lands that are really maybe the driving force for why people are coming to their town. So bringing in those land managers is really important. Bringing in the nonprofits that might be actually doing the work, maybe the trail building work. Um, maybe it's watershed enhancement work and really starting to connect the dots across this ecosystem as, as part of the strategy. Um, and this is a slide we'd love to share, um but this is often how things look within that tourism ecosystem when we um are first invited in or first having a conversation with the community, which is that many of those players in that ecosystem are working super hard, but they have their head down and they might just be working in different directions without maybe the time or understanding of what everyone else in the system is doing. So a really good destination management planning process uh helps to create space and time for conversations for everyone in that ecosystem to come together, talk about what future success looks like, and then start to figure out how resources can align. And not in a super controlled way, but if you can spend enough time talking about what that future end goal should look like, it allows everyone in the ecosystem to kind of adjust and change leadership, change budgets, you know, kind of adjust accordingly. And we've seen this um now for uh happen successfully in many destinations. I'll talk about a few of them at the end. Um, and then and also be mindful of time. See, I can go long, so I'll be quick. Um, I would just say, you know, another piece of the destination management planning that is really important is to really think about the direction of change. So I talked about the vision and the description of what the future looks like, but really as an overarching, um, you know, what is the direction you want to head? And we do something called scenario planning, which is really powerful. This is from Big Sky Montana, but um uh these axes look different in every community in terms of what are kind of the big future splitters? What are they grappling with? And to have that community conversation to help figure out which direction, how much and how far do we want to go? And it's really about figuring out both the direction of change and then the speed of change that you want to move up. Um, I think more or less the last thing I want to share here on destination strategies is that we tend to um help shape strategies that fit pretty neatly within um kind of the vernacular of most destination marketing organizations as they're evolving into more of a management space. But um it's important to consider the, the leadership and the management component. So management is a word used broadly, but it's also a specific realm of activities that need to be um need to be tackled, which is coordinating amongst um all those multiple agencies and organizations to really um assess, collect data and manage those visitor impacts. There's experience optimization, or in some places they call it destination development, but it's really that active career uh improving the visitor experience. And I'll share some examples of that, but how do you really um use visitor experience development as a tool? Just like you use destination marketing as a tool, how can you develop new experiences, maybe off the beaten path to help diffuse um impact and help people stay longer in your community? And then destination stewardship um is a, a key component. How are you building in the stewardship of those assets? Um, so that as visitors, you know, come and visit over time, you're, you're protecting both, you know, your environmental assets, but also, also, excuse me, your cultural assets. Um, and maybe even finding ways to sort of bring those to the forefront and celebrate what's there. Um, I won't go into this in much detail, but this is sort of how we, how we view it. Um, where the leadership and the management is really that foundation. Um, and you really have to have that component in place in order to do um these other facets really well. Let's skip over a few things here. Um, and I would just say, um, the one of the foundational components that we like to talk about is this concept of sustainable tourism. So um, I'm sure this is nothing new to anyone in the West, but it's this idea of how do we balance, you know, the environmental impacts, the cultural impacts and the economic impacts. And we will often work with communities to really talk about what does that look like? So if you're talking about a sustainable economy, you know, how do you um close the loop? Help visitors really purchase local products, help them connect with, you know, local artisans, local growers, keep those dollars local um to really increase that local economic stability. Um, we look at the environment now oftentimes in the US, you know, lots of great structures are already in place for conservation, but how do we help visitors really um uh, you know, protect those same spaces, treat them well? And I know you have an awesome campaign. You're um starting out on with responsible tourism. So things like that can really help. Um, and then with our communities and our culture, you know, this is a tricky one, but how do you shape your economy in ways that help improve livability? And, you know, one of those biggest strategies is really asking, how, what is it that needs to change? What do we need to protect? How, how do we need to build our spaces so we can all share this, share this place? So key components, leadership team, community values, ten year vision of success. If you are, are uh involved in different planning efforts, this won't look too different. And I would just say, um, the main difference with a destination management strategy really is about setting up that management and that leadership team. So really that vision of success, moving forward together, having a solid roadmap and having um you know, really the community aligned around a common set of priority projects. Okay, I'm going to skip over a few slides because I want to get to the examples. This slide is just representative of if you're doing this well, you'll start to connect the dots and you'll create a really resilient tourism ecosystem. So um Delta, do you mind just giving me a time check? I think I have a few more minutes.
Yes, I think you're fine.
I'm fine. Okay.
Thanks for checking. Yep.
All right. I don't want to, you know, I never want to run long and ramble, but um I, I will just share a few different examples um in these different spaces that I, I think from, you know, my conversations with Delta and doing a little bit of online research, some of these might be relevant to things you might be considering or thinking about in your community. But I'll start with the first one, which is um intentional collaboration. So I mentioned that leadership and management structure is one of the key sort of foundational components. Um, right here, um where, where I am, the Columbia River Gorge, which is a bi-state region between Oregon and Washington. I'm sure you're familiar with it. Decided after a destination management um community engagement process to really form uh a destination management entity. This is their purpose statement, which is optimizing the positive impacts of the visitor economy. Um, they have identified eight different impact areas that they're working on. And I'll explain the structure here in just a moment. Um, now it's a um, it's an impact network is how it's been designed. And so essentially it convenes and facilitates action teams that work on these different issues. Um, and essentially make progress over time amongst the different stakeholders that participate. And this is a, just an image of kind of their structure, which is that they do have a nonprofit structure. They have a network director, um a typical nonprofit board, but what they do is do these convenings with action teams that really involve stakeholders from a broader set of um of the region, whether they're, you know, sort of actively engaged or periodically engaged. And they do that through a series of convenings, both for the entirety of the industry, you know, twice a year. And then these smaller action teams that really work on projects. And I'll talk about some of the outcomes from that in another section. Um, in Jackson Hole, you might have heard they, um, there's quite a few of these communities and I'm sure that's why you're interested, but um Jackson Hole has done a sustainable destination management planning process with my colleagues at George Washington. And um George Washington University, excuse me. And out of it, they set up a destination stewardship um council is what they call theirs. And it's Jackson Hole and Teton County. And I had the opportunity to work with them over the past, well, roughly year and a half to help them set up their new destination management organization. And it's still in the works, but you can see the diversity of um types of people that sit on that council. They meet monthly. And they are focused on uh eight different impact areas, not too dissimilar to the Columbia River Gorge. Um, but I will say they've done an amazing job just because of their resource base. They have a full-time staff person that um not only convenes the council, but also convenes their action teams. And they have a phenomenal industry website if you want to go to their website and actually dig in. They keep their destination management. They keep their destination management plan updated with their progress, which is really cool. They just, they're very lucky to have a well-resourced council. Um, but it is that council that helps facilitate um these broader outcomes in the community, you know, across the National Park Service, across the county, across the city. Um, and they can really tackers tackle, excuse me, uh more complex issues. In Big Sky, we helped them set up the destination stewardship collaborative, and they're um often running on a number of different really cool projects there. So active transportation, and in fact, actually, sorry, I should tie that back to Big Sky. Um, they they I, one of the things I was most excited about was their uh ambition to to create an active transportation plan for their their community and their surrounding region. So that's one of their action teams. Um, and they're uh they've made a ton of progress in the last year. But this is one of the areas that we see communities um very interested in uh moving the needle on, um, which is the transportation conversation. It's, you know, different in every region, but um uh, these are often, you know, longer term strategies, but can they can make a real difference uh with both regards to community livability and the visitor experience. So and this is um a photo from Aspen. Aspen has probably uh, I would love to do show hands, but I can't see it very well. But I'm curious who's been there. Um, they have an incredible active transportation system that's been in the de- the development, uh, you know, in the works for decades. Um, but at this point, you know, they have a robust integration of community bike share, the micro transit um shuttles that you can take. And then, of course, if you've ever used their bus, they have five-minute headways on buses that run, you know, all throughout the winter with with warmers and chains. And anyway, it's just really impressive, someone from Alaska that doesn't see that great of transit uh up in Alaska in the wintertime. It's really impressive, but um they have um something that they started back actually in the eighties, which is this transit to to Trailhead. And this is one of the oldest existing lines um where you can actually take a bus and get up to a really popular Trailhead. And that's helped them address a number of issues, um, you know, uh, with parking and congestion, et cetera. And you can see at the bottom, it's a real um collaboration between the city, the Forest Service, um Snowmass, uh, the the Transit Authority, et cetera. So these type of um projects, um, they can take quite some time, but they're they're well worth the investment. In the gorge, when they started in 2017, they only had one leg of transit running between two uh two destinations on the Washington side. And now, you know, eight years later, they have a full transit system running around Mount Hood, around the gorge, uh, much faster headways. And they also sell a gorge pass, so visitors can hop on and kind of find their way around. With regards to responsible visitor education, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. It sounds like you're well on your way. Um, there's not numerous responsible visitor communication campaigns. I would say, you know, I don't think enough research has been done to find out if they work, but we do see them, you know, working anecdotally in some places. This one's from Big Sky. Uh, this is from Leavenworth, Washington. They have an awesome campaign. Give a schnitzel. Yeah, it's one of my favorites. So cute. And then here's McCall. I'm going to add you to my, add you to my list. Um, but yes, I think, you know, measurement and conversations annually. We have one here in the gorge as well, where the group of people that do all the communications get together on a regular basis. Another component of this is trail ambassador programs. And I know Leavenworth has one, Snowpawnee outside of Seattle has one. Um, and this is really to engage volunteers, to help meet visitors when they come and really get them the right information before they head out into the back country, um, maybe to help diffuse impact. Anyhow, these can be incredibly powerful. Regenerative mindset, this is a Norwegian hiking system with 550 huts and just this idea of creating experiences that also help people um help the locals be inspired about just going out into their backyard. So they really focus on local marketing, um, and they have a really amazing sustainability ethic. But, you know, that's Norway. We 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 expect that of Norway. Um, another kind of trend we see is just uh tour operators creating regenerative travel experiences, which is helping to get volunteer visitors out into spaces to help with restoration efforts or, you know, maybe it's invasive species removal. But this takes, um, you know, concerted effort for uh tour operators to work with uh local nonprofits. But it can be incredibly rewarding and a great way to uh help visitors give back. Last example here is abandoned dunes on the Oregon coast. It's a world-renowned golf course. They decided to dedicate two of their courses um to a nonprofit or a fund that they set up, which is the abandoned dunes charitable foundation. And they're now bringing in $2.5 million per year. I just spoke with the foundation director and they're giving money out um to the community, conservation, economy. But part of that is actually building the visitor infrastructure through trail systems and events and helping to sort of um take some of the pressures off uh some of the highly visited places. But it's, this is really rare that you see such um uh philanthropy coming from the tourism industry itself. It's very cool. Okay, this is, I believe, the last category, and I'll move fairly quickly here. Visitor experience development, a major trend in the U.S. is uh working on accessibility audits and making improvements to all kinds of infrastructure to ensure that, you know, no one is left behind, that um that our spaces are welcoming to all different types of abilities and identities. Um, and this is a little bit of work that was done here in the gorge not too long ago with creating some guides. Um, there's new organizations that have completely popped up in the last five years. This is Wheel of the World. Um, and they are a organization that can come and help do audits, but then they basically bring all that content onto their platform so that anyone who's searching for these type of experiences can find them. Um, we see lots of investments in trail systems, um, whether that's to completely develop a new system, to create a new attraction, or whether that's somewhere like Whistler that really just, you know, they develop more trails and higher density to kind of help uh to create less congestion, but also more interest in coming there. Things like whitewater parks in Bend. Uh, smaller, more rural communities are, many of them are investing in dark skies initiatives and becoming recognized uh internationally for being dark skies communities and um taking that and promoting that. Um, food trails, so uh food is another big aspect that community organizations are working on to really help to connect um local growers, wineries, breweries um with visitors, whether that's directly or through restaurant and eating establishments. And immersive food experiences, that's, I think, maybe my last point here is just um really visitors want the immersive experiences. They don't just want um, you know, to go into a regular restaurant. They want to go and experience how that food is grown and and where it comes from. And how do you, what do you do with it locally? And, you know, hunting, how do you, how do you catch something and and skin it? People are really interested in that stuff. So that's it. Um, I think actually Delta might already have this handout, but I, we do have a small handout on building your tourism ecosystem. If you want to grab that or I can share it later. And I just want to say thank you. Um, I'm really, yeah, happy to be here. And I'm sorry for going on a little longer than I think we planned, so I'll stop there.
I think that was great, Kristin. Thank you so much. And and Mira, I do think we have a couple more minutes. If you have any questions of Kristin or others in the room, have any clarifying questions?
Yeah, um, Kristin, thanks for being so so concise and moving us along really well. But we do have time. This is a really important topic to the council. So let's take a little pause and ask if there's any questions or comments or anything you'd like to ask Kristin.
Yeah, I have a, I have a comment. Um, thank you, Kristin. That was really great. And um, you know, I think the thing that I came away with is um, you know, we've got the chamber that has revamped their marketing. Um, you know, their their message, their marketing message and everything. But what your presentation is showing me that that that's just the tip of the iceberg. I mean, we've got to put in a lot of different um uh like infrastructure, I don't mean like roads or anything, but infrastructure into that plan in terms of, you know, transportation planning, marketing alone is 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 not going to do it. Um, and the 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 other thing I'm taking away from that is is that the communities that have built these destination management plans um have a lot of human capital behind that to make that happen. Um, so, you know, as far as uh us getting a destination management plan, I think I think we uh, you know, when you mentioned, when are you ready for it? I think we're ready for it. Um, maybe we should have been thinking about this, you know, a few years back. Of course, you know, with COVID, it just, I don't think people anticipated uh, you know, so many people um coming out to rural areas, you know, to to um, you know, get away from the crowds and everything. But um, but it's um, you know, I I think we need that. And and my my worry is just how how as a as a community, how do we get the how we're going to be able to manage getting the uh human capital necessary to to really make the implement a plan? Um, I know you don't have the answers to that now, but.
I I don't. Yeah, I don't, but I do want to respond to something because this is something I I've been observing and thinking about a lot. But it it seems really easy. People are very eager and willing to come to the table when you start out on these processes, right? Uh, often, I mean, some people might take a little more convincing than others, but people kind of recognize there's an issue and an opportunity. And so they're quick to come to the table. They are often awesome participants throughout the entire process. But the piece that I think communities miss is that there has to be an investment in the coordination of that human capital over time. And so thinking about that capacity in advance. So I just wanted to mention that, that you can't, you know, put it on the shoulders of your chamber. You know, you have to find that capacity. I mean, it could be, the capacity could be anywhere, but you do have to recognize that in order to sort of keep that human capital capital actively engaged and working towards things in new ways, you do have to invest in that convenient or coordination capacity locally. So anyway, sorry, just an observation, a little food for thought as you think about your strategy.
Yeah, thank you.
I had a thought, Kristin, if I can just jump in and uh relate a little bit to human capital. But we're in the uh timeframe of looking at McCall comprehensive plan. And I'm just thinking, to what extent does the destination management strategies almost become a component of your comprehensive plan? And that couples with the idea, of course, that as you pointed out, no place is a um separate island in this destination, and particularly here in Valley County, Idaho, where Valley County, who has some separate ideas or visions perhaps, is the key component of uh a key stakeholder we have to work with, as are there many others. Anyhow, I thought your presentation was great and you made all kinds of double star notes.
Double stars.
If I might, Mayor, then we can continue to go around and ask Kristin. But I I, that's a beautiful segue into what I wanted to share. Um, and I'm going to share my screen really quickly because we made this graphic. Um, and um, so Erin and I went through our master plans, your master plans, and started to pull out and identify those components that are already existing in the policies and actions associated with your many um adopted plans from the comfort, the existing comprehensive plan, transportation plan, upcoming climate action plan strategies that you've been introduced to, um, the the pathways master plan. And then also, and I, and I think my point here is there's a strong foundation. There are these components that all um relate to the destination strategy and are a component of that. And I think, so I think we're starting from a really good foundation of pieces. And perhaps where we are is that slide that Kristin showed with all the arrows sort of working hard, but maybe not working in the same direction and calling it a destination strategy. You're pulling it that way and and thinking about it from that lens. Because we do have um our ADA plan to look at accessibility. We do have our um transportation master plan that looks at multimobility. Um, we've already been doing great work in the um realms of um as a city, working on um destination development and stewardship and thinking more about lake quality and environmental impacts and things like that. So um, this isn't uh starting from scratch. I think it's a matter of taking those pieces that we have and and also some of the regional efforts, like the um that resident sentiment survey is being done on a regional level by BSU's resiliency planning effort recently. And and so that's just come out, right? We're seeing those sentiment surveys already pulled together. And and the uh Food Coalition is, the West Central Mountains Food Coalition is out there doing foodie stuff. Um, and so maybe it's about connecting the dots and um directing in, you know, sort of all pulling the same direction under that lens of destination um strategy than it is about needing to start a completely new effort.
I I agree with that. I just to chime in, I don't know for that part of the agenda. Um, but, you know, I've been involved in a lot of groups, volunteer groups, including an example I'm going to use is the Valley County Recreation Advisory Council. Um, they are doing a lot of these things or getting started. It's a new committee on a lot of these things. But it's the same thing Kristin was talking about, where people come together, they get these strategies together, everything goes great, but there is not a person to execute it. And every single person on that rec committee has a full-time job, and a lot of them are parents or single parents. So it's like the, you know, there needs to be a dedication of person power, paid person power, if we want to see all these different groups who are working hard and doing their best come together as a collaboration. Like our marketing committee meeting, sorry, changing committees. Our marketing committee meeting for the chamber is once a month without fail, and it's open to the public. We meet two months on Zoom and then one month in person, just like that. Anyone from the city is welcome to come to that. Hundred percent be on the committee, not just listen, come help us, come share those perspectives. But everyone's busy. You're, you folks are the same way. So I think the idea of actually investing in the human capital that it takes to bridge some of these gaps and get all the arrows pointing in the same way for our community would be a huge step forward.
So um, what we're hoping from today um is that we'll get some direction from council about um pursuing, you know, some direction that it's it, your opinion about whether or not we should invest some human capital in pursuing uh more work along the destination strategy realm. And the very first step would be convening kind of the broader partners. We have, we have two key partners in the room today, but we recognize that there's a lot of broader partners and committees that are that are working in this realm. Um, and starting by convening those and just having the conversation about whatever it's doing, what they're struggling with and and how we can move it forward towards this in this mindset of destination strategy. Um, so with that, I think we might.
Yeah, well, if we're gonna, we're gonna see if we can do a hybrid here because we have people online, so maybe we'll figure out how that's going to go. Um, but what we thought would be a good um activity is to actually split the room up and just have some discussion about some action ideas that could possibly be um obtained within this next year. Um, and so these are all meant to be things that could happen and for you to prioritize them. And also to just sort of talk through this, what this commitment might look like. And then we'll come back together, report back, and then um see the way forward, see what you guys are thinking after that discussion.
And I think that this is a good forum to um chat through those things, like Councilmember Nielsen was bringing up earlier, and those sort of points that perhaps we need to um talk through and think about in the in the next coming year.
So we think maybe with, hi Kristin, what do you want to say? Oh, I was going to say, if you, I have until 9:30. I could help facilitate your online people if you wanted, if that was, if that was helpful. If not, no worries, I can also hop on.
Um, we don't know that we could pivot that.
Okay, oh, yeah, no, that's fine. No, it's fine. Go with what you were going to do.
Uh, we'll, we'll see, we'll see what we can make happen. So maybe what we'll do, Dallas, is make your group a little bit smaller since you'll be filling the online phone.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I can do that.
And then um we'll push you guys this way. Um, do you guys want to come and join my group down here? And then that way it's equal council split a little bit. And that way you can go bop Julie that way. I could. No, I think chamber people. So Michelle and Rich, do you want to come over here with me then? And that way you guys can stay with Delta. Does that work?
Yeah. Well, is Delta online though?
Delta's going to be online.
There's two chamber people online.
Yeah.
She's going to bring them with her.
Oh, okay. I've worked that setting. I don't remember that reference.
We hope, we were hoping to be all in person. We thought we could make this super cool, but, you know, it may not work. Okay, so I'm going to take them out of the room, I think. Once she's logged in, make sure you keep them.
I'm keeping them. Um, but I think we did it. So so we we um really grouped. But I think we did it. So, so we really grouped them in kind of assessment, education, and then marketing. And we found that many of the strategies were related to each other, so we stacked them.
Yes.
So the, yes, first is to bring, do kind of a, you know, destination strategy leadership team and to bring in some additional partners. Also to help identify kind of the connections and map the stakeholders a little bit of who's doing what to start to bring the arrows pointing in the same direction. And then the assessment was really, we added kind of do that resident sentiment survey, like look at the data that BSU is bringing together now. And also engage the businesses in defining target tourist audiences, but also to educate about what tourism is and what it means. There's a feeling that maybe there's some misconceptions about what we mean when we say visitors or tourists. So those we put together, we piled them together. Then there's kind of this notion about business support, shop local and support of our workforce. So this one's all stacked underneath the ways to encourage visitors to stimulate the economy. But then also providing training opportunities for workforce and businesses. So we kind of lumped all of the workforce development, local shop, local business support under one. And as part of the assessment, we really felt it was important to determine the assets that are ready for tourism and also those that aren't ready to better know which ones to
Or we don't want to share.
What we don't want to share, or what we do are ready to share so that we can try to help guide tourists to the right locations that will give them the experience that we want them to have. And we lumped that with the prioritized non-motorized recreation together.
That's great.
Finally, this is about kind of how to get around. So this is about inspiring the use of transit, active transportation, walking, biking, and then wayfinding. So this is helping community members and tourists get around. And then then there's an educational component about responsible recreation, education about camping, protecting our ecosystem, landscape and culture. Identify ways visitors need to hear the season to stay safe. So this is all an educational campaign and, and educational effort that we lumped together and, and is related to ultimately the messaging and marketing that could be, is threaded throughout. But in this case, we, we added leverage history and heritage. We added that as a strategy. With the thought that we have a really rich and unique heritage and history and by educating and informing about that, perhaps people will, will care a little bit more and be more respectful to our place and in our heritage. And part of that is engaging the history organizations and the tribes in that conversation and effort. So.
Okay, well, Dallas and I do a lot of riffing, rip off that. So basically, we did the same thing. We did try, however, try to put them in order to some degree of what was important to people. But the most important thing I think that came out, and it came out at the end from Judy, which was to start by asking our locals what it means to bring a tourist here and what's important to them. So basically, she's saying that if our locals are happy with the way that we're attracting those tourists, then everybody can sort of get on board and we could find that, you know, symbiotic relationship to be able to do all of these things effectively. So concentrating on locals as being our number one thought. So that came up. And then we also ended up prioritizing the data and survey section, doing the scans, all of that information. We kind of bolt those together because you have to actually have the data before you can decide what you want to do next. The next one in line for our group was like a four, four A, four B situation, which was educating and protecting the landscape, our culture, encouraging responsible recreation, which we think implies that. And then also identifying what visitors need to be here and stay safe. So that whole concept of the ecosystem culture and protecting this place and its culture were really important to our team. Identifying how to stimulate the economy was then next. So we also bulked that in with talking about one change. Instead of engaging businesses and defining target customer or tourism customers, we just said we want to know what kind of customers they need. So does that mean local customers? Does that mean they're an irrigation company? Somebody said, what does that look like? So that we can do a better job understanding what they need to survive as a local business. And then we got into next level stuff of transit, transportation, walking, wayfinding of that being, again, after we've identified what we need up here with our scans and surveys, we can then make that happen. And then all the way down the list into non-motorized recreation, which ended up at the bottom of our priority list. But overall, fairly aligned in the concept of grouping things together. And so Delta and I can put all these together and create something fun.
You will report back to everyone.
Where are we with time, Delta?
It is, we have just a couple more minutes, just two more minutes.
So I guess I'm going to, I'm going to lead us in what's, what's next to the way forward. So the idea of bringing everybody together today was a couple of things else had on the agenda, which number one was, what are your thoughts as, as a board, as a council of, should we pursue this idea of doing a destination management plan for the community? And secondly, do you want to get started? Identifying members of your team to at least start the conversation of how do we build this collaborative management leadership team and who the players are and how do we get that started? So I can open up the floor. I guess I would start, you know, out of respect to the mayor, if you have any comments or if you'd like to lead the room in conversation.
Well, I'll let you guys continue to facilitate, but I would just say, knowing council the way I know and, and working with all of you on city staff, we're definitely interested in this. Yeah, it's, it's a priority for us. And we really appreciate everyone's attendance today, whether through teams or a guest speaker or here in the room. We're definitely interested. We want to see it be effective. We want to be intentional. And we, we have high hopes that it'll bring, you know, great results in the future. As far as how to do it, we're going to rely on a lot of people helping us. But this is a big step forward.
Any other comments from the room?
Well said. I speak for council.
Anybody from the groups?
To add to our discussion, the first, kind of the first three items really can't happen without the people who live here. You know, when we look at collecting, you know, bringing together all the, the different areas, whether it's, you know, managing weeds or, you know, running a business. Everyone's kind of working on their thing, like figuring out how, how to like, not necessarily find the identity of the community, but focus on like, you know, we can't have a service industry without the people who live here. Like, we have to figure out, we have to build our foundation first, right? Like, there's you know, when you talk about the restaurant or any of the service industry stuff. We want, we want people to be able to live here. We want people to be able to come here. Maybe they're working seasonally and they end up staying or they visit, they want to move here. Like, we need people to live here. We need to figure out how to get people to actually be able to live here. And there's a lot of stuff that we can't control, real estate, et cetera. But like, that's, you know, for me, the kind of the top three things that we discussed, that in my mind, that's kind of the, the basis for all of those, like, it's community, the community first, how do we, how do we support the living for people here? Like, how do we get people to live here?
That's great. We were really aligned on that over here as well. And it sounds like you guys are on the same train. Anybody from the board or online want to comment on either of these topics of creating a destination management plan and/or whether or not this leadership collaborative team is possible for your group or?
I think, I think it would be great. Like, we, for so long, you know, and our market is really interesting because the brand, and we talk about this a lot, the brand is McCall. But in people's minds, when they're coming, I, I mean, I had friends come visit and be like, hey, I'm going to be in McCall, you know, I can't wait to, we haven't seen each other for 10 years. Well, turns out they're on Lake Cascade in a rental house. You know, and I was like, oh, yeah, I'll drive down and see you. But like, the, the brand is McCall. And there's, you know, we are, I like to say we're a recreation town instead of a tourist town. I know, like, there's all kinds of reasons. You could disagree with that, but that's my personal thing. But I just, you know, I think the thing we have to remember is not all businesses in this town are tourism related. And the chamber is very important with our goals and everything. So destination management is more, as you guys, is more than tourism. In your world, it's infrastructure and but I think the partnerships between the different groups, that having a person who is dedicated to this and really have the human resources available can only amplify all the different things that the different groups are trying to get done. And it's only going to bust down barriers and obstacles. Because even like just the groups I'm in, like, I'm hearing things and I'm like, oh, my God, the valley county rec committee is totally into that. And these are people are also working on that and that and that. And I really do feel like, again, all, all the volunteers in our committee can only do so much. And when you start dedicating a human resource to it, it just opens doors. It just, it opens doors. It creates so much more energy. And, you know, I'm not, I don't live in the city limits, but I would vote for any counselor.
So we are just a couple of minutes over time. So I just want to honor everybody's time and thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to join us. Thank you, Chamber, for coming to the table and presenting and helping to support this effort and Kristin's time with us. Mayor Council, is there anything additional that you'd like to add this morning? I would like to just see if, if you have a show of hands. Are you interested in, in learning and working more with Kristin Dahl? And cross-current collective? Yeah, if we could. So we'll, we'll look into how we might be able to tap into her experience and leadership a little bit more through this process. And, and our next coffee, we'll talk about next steps and we'll report back to both organizations after that. Anything else?
My, I would, I'm interested in Kristin. I'd like to see more of her background. To me, like the things she showed here, like, we are nothing like Jackson Hole, Wyoming. So like, I, I would like to know if she has a more geographically spread, you know, like, like, does she have some experience in clients that are more similar?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. And she has a great portfolio on her website that, that you're, we can direct you to, to, to learn a little bit more about her background and the scope of communities that she's worked with.
Because we all know what
She's cherry picked a few, but she's definitely worked in some Montana communities that are very similar to us and things like that. So.
And I will say, like, because we, we met her at the conference and saw the presentation that like, in some ways, it's the communities that are kind of leading with this because it's, it's sort of a newer concept. It's an evolution of, right?
Yeah.
This field. And so I think you start seeing some of these communities that she pointed out. Those are, those are communities that have a lot of resources and are also
They're also, which is my
They're also cutting edge on like, okay, we're going to be intentional about who we are because we have so much visitation. And here's how we're going to do it, right?
And that's kind of what I was trying to get to. It is like, under-resourced.
Yeah, like we're a little bit of a different type.
We're aware.
But what's interesting is, is like even in her presentation, you'll see that, you know, like McCall does lead in a lot of different areas, right? Without even really realizing it, but this is sort of a formulation of kind of all the efforts that I think, like we said, we would be building on what's already happening.
So I do, I, thank you. I, I thank you. I did notice. And I was just going to say that I wanted to remind everyone, and maybe this is what you're going to do, Judy, and I'll hand it to you, is that the during democracy topic will be along these lines. And that is when? Next week?
It's the 30th.
Okay.
September 30th, that's 6:30 here at the library. The topic is, is summer in McCall unsustainable? I think you'll get a lot of stakeholder sentiment there.
So this, this meeting will be recorded and it will be online, it'll be online, right? So if you have a list, you can send them the link to this meeting beforehand. If they want to watch it, it might be informative. Or maybe you don't want to buy us.
You may want to check the audio. You may want to check the audio.
Watch Kristin Dahl's presentation or this meeting, it'll be available online. We can send you that down. Mayor, did you want to close it out?
Just wanted to thank everyone. This is, this was a meeting that we were really looking forward to. We saw, you know, all the council members here engaged. And thank you, Chamber, for helping us plan this meeting. Thank you, Delta. Thank you, Erin. Our, yeah, we're excited about moving forward and we do our best work when all of you help us.
Thanks online.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Board members are disappointed they missed it.